I'd like to follow Wrightsville Borough's regular meeting for July 27th. Can you say that the public?
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and to the Republic to which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, we do have one item on your agenda that's going to change a little bit. Keith has got another appointment here in about forty minutes, so after we get through the meeting minutes, then Keith is pointing to go over the final answer. Um, before that, uh, let's see, we have a public comment, Ed?
Yes, I was placed on the storm work dispossessing management committee meeting, and they have issued new regulations for the MS four this year, and apparently there is possibility they may have to increase what the borough's gonna have to pay to be a member there. And we'll be taking a look at our July twenty-seventh meeting. York County Heritage Preservation has released their final draft for public comment, and they're, uh, they're holding a public meeting on Tuesday, July twenty-sixth, at the York County nine-eleven center at six P.M. And then you can also go on to York County Planning Commission website to view the final draft. And they had about thirty people that did the Scott menu store fundraiser. It'll be there, okay?
Thanks, Ed. So, so, so they figure we're gonna have to pay more, is that it?
Yes, the, uh...
Yeah, you tell me, you work real hard, Ed.
I know.
What are the keynotes during the cost increase, or that hasn't been discussed yet?
It's being discussed at the twenty-seventh.
You said what, that's on like June twenty, July twenty-seventh?
Yes, that's not for you, it's because I'm on that committee that, and then we discussed at August meeting is what I'm doing.
August twenty-second's the meeting, right?
Yeah.
Am I having that correct?
Yeah. So, but they increased the amount of seven- inch boxers and stuff, it's gotta be, so...
John sent me some stuff on that. Brian, did you receive that?
No, but I'm actually going to the meeting about, uh, on the twenty-ninth or twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, there's a meeting for D E P about it.
So, but, but, yeah, the bad thing is, we're trying to fight it, but, you know, nothing we can do about it, so...
Okay, that'd be a good thing to, uh, have an, uh, August planning meeting, whatever they come up with in that. Um, Mel?
Well, since Ed's talking, uh, someone just asked me if back in the second world wise, Ed always in the main office, so we're here in this room or outside, when they come down here, they can't go back in there, since he's not on the council, to be back in that office.
That is being addressed.
Um, and the blue sofa, still they move, is there... What's up with that?
The same one, though?
I think it moved sides, Mel.
Yeah, moved sides, is it? Didn't move that out.
Which one?
Right across from the set from the...
It's right at seven, that's an old street, if you're turning right, I want to...
So, it's moving right now?
It's on the backside of the other...
It's just trashy looking.
You remember from this side?
No, it's not like, it's not on the seventh street side, 'cause I've never seen it.
No, it's on the backside of the road.
It's on the other side.
Other side of the house.
It's just trashy looking.
But actually, I noticed it more, Mel, where it is than I did before.
And honestly, when you drive through the home, Helen has nothing, and Helen's a very clean-looking person, I mean, all I hear from other people is Helen, and I know I come here and I'm the one that brings it up, but people do notice the stuff around, it's thick trash here and trash here. And about two, three months ago, Greg, you were talking about the fire attacks that, like, we couldn't get rid of it or something, I would, you made up a little comment, but I made a call about this a little scare.
The foreign fire attacks.
Oh, well, I just called, I asked about how does that work, because the two, three people get through it, one though you end up to fight with, but anyhow, um, they kinda said that, and I didn't give them comment, guess what the budget is, you can get rid of a fire taxi, and then it's based, you still have to get money from the borough based on the size of your town, or how many people in your town, how many fires out there, but I thought, you thought we could never get rid of that, but you can.
Well, we can get rid of our own tax.
Right.
But we're not getting rid of the foreign fire tax, that's our relief tax.
Right, yeah, I know, I know, I know, the tax that Wrightsville people pay and nobody else in York County has, but here's my point, they get it over, nothing against them, play it for them, go to Dover's pride, help people, but you have people in here in town asking for help, I think you just need to work with them people, and you know, I was like the one, oh, I can't get rid of that sound, but when you talk to them people, well, then you got Mike and Eric stood underneath it, and you listen to them, I mean, I don't feel it, you don't feel it, because where we're at, I don't think our sound's that bad, but when they tell you their kids and everybody's going like this, you can't help but feel for them, I just think, instead of getting lawyers and fighting them, really, somebody should be trying to work with them, because we don't have it for where we're at, why can't get rid of the one down this way before?
So, one of them's a financial, it's removed because of one on the firehouse was no longer operational, and because of finances, they took that one and put it on the firehouse. Maybe that came down to a financial thing, nothing else.
And there wasn't enough money to replace it.
I don't know, I just wish you all worked together with that people.
Let me explain one more thing, the borough with the fire tax gives the fire station about sixty to eighty thousand dollars, depending on how much is collected for the year, and that all comes down to who's here and who's not here, whatever that number is. Fifty-seven, fifty-seven thousand. So, move to Manchester Borough, it's not called a fire tax, but it's one point two million to maintain the fire department, and that comes out of everybody's taxes, so if that happens here, we're gonna have to raise taxes by ten to pay for our fire department to cover the Wrightsville.
I guess fire tax, quite honestly, I just wish this whole problem, you should all sit down and work with them people, because I just think, we're not spending a lot of lawyer to fight on them, because they're gonna, they're gonna go after it, it's basically to get it removed, but, but why would you not wanna work with them, because you want these other accounts to help that people, there's people in there in town asking for help, I just think, somebody needs to figure something out there. I don't know, anyhow.
I'm sure it'll always be a topic of discussion.
Yeah, just wish it kinda get away, um, I guess that's all I'm gonna say, that's all I got.
Okay, um, anybody else have anything for public comment? If not, uh, we're gonna move right into, uh, a motion for the June sixth meeting. Is that the right way to start, what am I?
I'm not sure if it should be all live, am I on here, am I on...
There's different families, but...
I think it is.
We do have one question. It shows Councilman Shannon, and then Councilman Shannon absent. Okay, does anybody have motion, everybody look for a minute? All right, second?
All second, motion to accept the, uh, regular meeting minutes.
Is there any discussion on the regular meeting minutes? And the, the gentleman there with John Shannon, what is that? Okay. All those in favor? Aye, close. Okay, motion here.
Make a motion to approve the June twenty-seventh meeting.
I'm second?
Yeah, I'm second.
Any questions or comments on the final meeting minutes? All those in favor? Aye, close. Okay, um, moving right along, uh, Keith?
The reports are in front of you, and I have some protocol next time, too, very definitely.
Okay.
You have the check registers for the, uh, month of June, and the statements will reflect, unbelievably, but, uh, you know, we're six months into the new year, which also means we're about three months away from the budget for, for next year, so, uh, that's not the news part, but, uh, just to bear in mind that, uh, probably by September, we'll be theory enough to, uh, be considered, uh, what's a head for us for two thousand seventeen. Uh, cash at this point, you can see, uh, is, is reflective of just the point of the year that we're in, uh, the real estate taxes are being, uh, collected, uh, there's also one that is not reflected in the reports, we received that right at the beginning of July, uh, it was about another thirty, I don't know, thirty-four thousand, I believe, came in, so, we finally are probably a little bit ahead of the projection now, uh, for our real estate tax collection for the year, uh, but that is not reflected in these reports. Uh, the only other thing I'd like to, to show you on this, uh, ordn, not above the ordinary expenses of the month, we'll see down there, that we did issue a check to the fire company for forty-four thousand dollars, there about the, about the middle of your page, uh, that records as, uh, their portion of the fire tax that was basically received by the borough through, uh, the month of May. Uh, so again, that was, that was turned over to the fire company then, uh, right there towards the middle of June. So, that's not all of what they're receiving, as you heard, it's about fifty-seven thousand, uh, we anticipate that that is the bulk of it, basically because of all of our taxes have been received at that point for them. Uh, I have no other, uh, comments really on the, uh, checks and the bills that were paid for the month, uh, ordinary, necessary, I think you'll find out down through, uh, if you, if there's nothing else that, uh, probably will stand out to you. But on the report then, for the six months, uh, the budget report, again, if you just look at, I'm just gonna highlight the, the sub-totals for you, but you see our projected revenue at this point, we projected about six hundred ninety-six thousand, and we have six hundred ninety-nine thousand that'll come in, so our revenue projections are our own target, uh, some categories are pluses and minuses, but, uh, all in all, we're at the bottom lines, uh, we're on projected amounts. I would even comment that as you down through the administrative, the general government, uh, the police and the streets, those main components of our budget, you'll see that we are running, uh, in pretty good shape with that, uh, at this point. The police, uh, budgeted at this point two hundred nine thousand eight seventy-two, and they're coming in, having spent at this point two hundred eight thousand. Uh, the streets, the same way, uh, who projected a hundred and four thousand, and they spent roughly ninety-one thousand. But again, those things are, we'll be talking about some of those matters to lay out in the year, with some street meetings, projects and stuff, but, uh, those are reflected, they are great, I have no other comments really, uh, for me to make, uh, or entertain any questions about the, the reports, either the check register or the financials.
Does anybody have any questions? For Keith on the check register or the financial report? If not, we do have motion to the check register.
All second motion to accept the check register.
Anybody have any questions about check register? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion here. I'm second?
All second motion.
Any questions on the financial report? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion here. Okay, um...
Just a little update, please. Uh, just some other, uh, FYIs and such, I've been in contact with the, uh, M T Bank, is also willing to put together and offer us some financing on the arrival of the lease vehicle, uh, I think we, they're gonna put together a better package than I think was offered by, is that Fulton that gave us the first numbers, do you remember? Don't remember. I think it was Fulton that came in with some, in that, for the first initial, uh, for the M T, is gonna be more in compliance with what we were requesting, uh, so that, they're working on that, uh, we also are working on getting the account set up for the transition of the, some of that great money into that account that we need to set up, uh, that's being addressed and taken care of, and we had a series of, we did have our preliminary insurance meeting with the, uh, the insurance carrier, uh, just this last month, uh, they're putting together some of the preliminary things, we're hoping that what is going to be presented to us is, uh, is even a better package than the last year, uh, it looks like especially in the area of the Woodton's Comp, and that has always been the one that nobody wants to give any kind of competitive bids on, but we are past that time limit where that all gets reviewed, so I believe we may be in a little bit better position going forward with our overall insurance package. Uh, and the other item there would have been, uh, we are having very shortly, I hope, uh, a meeting then to be set up for the health insurance area to be reviewing the health insurance coverage of the borough employees, uh, we're getting ready for that, uh, you know, the first deadline for that, and we asked them to do it a little bit earlier this year, and, uh, they are, so, we'll be looking at those policies then also. I think that might be it, Greg.
Okay, any other questions for Keith?
I do, Keith. I don't know if this is Keith or this is the borough's name point, if the fire department, and I just mentioned this to Chad briefly the other day, I wanted to ask this question, I don't even know if we can do this, if the fire department got into a situation with a piece of equipment where they need to take a loan out, would we be able to get a lower interest rate than them, and as the borough, could we do even that? Could we even take a low interest rate, rate loan out, and then basically, they're paying us back, can we even do such a thing? That's a question I had, you don't have to answer that, you can look into it. It was just a thought that I had the other day. But it's something I wanted to ask, it might be more of a, a question for our solicitor or a question for our auditors, whether they would agree that to a fair.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's been done, I mean, it's been done, I should have a word like a debt borrower, too, I mean, you have to, you know, D C E B stuff, and, you know, I guess it depends on what the interest rate is, but, you know, you have to, unless you're gonna give the money as a donation, you have to get the interest rate back, I think.
Right.
You can't make a profit on it.
I think so.
You have to watch those.
Do they answer me possibly?
I think it's possible, but I'll also say, I believe it's a long shot.
Okay. I'm just asking, just something came what I did the other day, and I wanted to ask.
Another question, I want to say, Mel, I know, the fire department does borrow money for a piece of equipment, does that need to be backed by the borough? Did we not do that before? What, what happened with the other?
A lot of times, uh, we can get the low interest loans, but it doesn't cover the whole, all the piece of pie, you know, you, you still gotta borrow money.
Right, you'll have to borrow money, do, in the past, didn't they look to the borough to secure the land? I'm trying to think.
The piece of equipment actually covered like ninety percent of the loan.
Ninety percent usually, you have to remember, ten percent.
Right. We can get low interest, but it, it never covers the whole cost of a piece of equipment, unless you get some type of grant, where...
Because even still today, the engine probably still worth three hundred thousand dollars if they were selling.
Yeah.
And they definitely don't have that, or owe that kind of money on it.
No. But what I'm, what I'm, I did, I think, I think I have a way got around to your understanding of my question, I thought in the past, that I thought the little rescue, and maybe even the engine, I thought those loans were, that, when the loans were made, I thought they came to the borough as collateral to back that, was that what?
They have a voting as collateral.
Yeah, they use their buildings.
The voting and the, the other piece that stayed off as collateral.
So, that, so that stands alone and doesn't mean...
Yeah.
Might be the borough being the guarantor.
Well, that's where I was, I recall something like that in the past.
What happened?
With the borough being the guarantor of the loan, so that you default, bankrupt.
And we actually use the building and the truck for collateral in the mess.
But is that typical for the municipality?
Well, not really, it's a problem is we don't, the guarantee, we wouldn't have collateral to go after, you know what I'm saying, I mean, the bank would secure the equipment, but if we were to guarantee the loan...
There's no way to lose the fire station, too.
Right, yeah. And that's, gets a little dicey there.
Because they could get all cleaned up, windshield. All right, well, we'll keep that in mind. Any other questions for Keith, or move on? Okay, um, we have zoning report, everybody has that, does anybody have any questions about, uh, the zoning report? It's a pretty short sweep. Okay? Fire report?
Uh, seventy-four calls in the month of June, twenty-eight being in Wrightsville Borough, twenty-four being in Helen Township. Uh, in June, we completed our second, uh, chicken barbecue fundraiser, uh, we had two, one in May, one in June, and I'd say our profit was around eighteen hundred after seven of them, um, in perspective, eighteen hundred doesn't buy a set of turnout gear, so...
Oh, we have another one? October?
Maybe September.
September, again, September versus October?
Somewhere around that time, we're looking at.
Sweet.
Thank you.
Just the money, those are yours, weren't they, usually? That's the problem.
I mean, buy a set of tires.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, even the bird, bird janitors, but, you know, if people have that, and then operate the fire department.
If people don't realize that in the wintertime, the gas bill, um, just to keep the building at fifty-five degrees or sixty degrees is outrageous, and if the trucks get down below thirty-two, everybody knows what happens to a diesel truck whenever you, if you don't have it plugged in, it don't start. All righty, um, we'll move right into the ambulance report, Mr. Jim Hart.
What do you need, ladies and gentlemen? Uh, for the month of June, we ran a hundred and eleven calls, that's probably one of the highest months we've had in forty years. Of the hundred and eleven, fifty-six were class one A L S, twenty-four passed twos, uh, emergency, and thirty-one class three, no lights, no sound. Uh, out of the hundred and eleven, we trans, treated and, and or transported seventy patients. Eight went to Lancaster General, one to Lancaster Regional, thirty went to Memorial Hospital, and twenty-five went to York Hospital. We had one call in East Prospect, we had eighteen calls in Helen Borough, thirty-three in Helen Township, we had five in Lancaster County, we had seven in Lower Windsor, which is probably the all-time high for covering that area, and that's our second due territory. Springers, we did twenty, that's our second due territory, and Wrightsville, we had twenty-seven, and that was extremely high, because I think the average, just looking back over the year, seventeen, twelve, fourteen, ten, twelve, and then it spiked to twenty-seven. And you have the breakdown of the type of dispatches. Any questions?
Any questions for Jim?
One question I have, Jim, and it has nothing to do with your reports, is, were, are you still in contact with Lower Windsor, are you moving forward with that, are you hearing anything?
We are hearing things.
You're hearing things, okay. Are you gonna be at the, uh, next E Y C M A meeting?
Yes, I think that's been postponed till, like, August, yeah. So, the answer to your question is yes, we are in contact.
You understand to give us an O D at that time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And that's, gonna play a big role in, in the scheme of things, but it looks promising.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, do you wanna do the police report, or do you want him to do the police report?
Do you have the police report, that is for me?
How's that a half hour, do I do? Sixty-eight calls for service, sixteen citations, four DUI arrests, one accident, nine calls for service to assist, unit two is still out of service, year-to-date, we're at five hundred twenty-three calls, and not counting Dallas and today, fifty-two officers have been killed since January first.
Today?
Two.
Two?
No, it's least two, I guess there was another issue in...
Michigan.
Michigan. Michigan and somewhere else.
I think ten, ten in the west since Dallas.
Okay, thanks, Adam. Streets Department, anybody have any questions for, for them?
Anybody?
Any issues? Did we get the new parts in for Ivo?
Sitting on the trailer.
Greg, can I make a comment on the suits?
Yep.
Uh, we had some maintenance issues with five-fifty, and Mike got the parts that we need for that, and he's in the process of doing the repairs himself, so, uh, as, as of for lunch today, things were going pretty well, he's getting it back together, uh, at a big saving by him doing it, so that's, that's huge for him to have that knowledge and be able to do that maintenance. Uh, Mike also has, uh, an issue with the bucket truck that we get from Redline, he, we were talking about it, that Redline may not be able to lend that truck to us anymore, uh, because of the new council and, uh, some issues they have with lending that equipment, that, uh, it could become an issue with us putting banners up, and that was one of the two, two suppliers of bucket trucks, right?
Yeah, Springers Curry's not so good at loaning equipment out, so, they were the two places that I used to use.
And we can't use ladders, I mean, it's just, that's not going, so, there could be some issues coming up down the road, we're not gonna be able to put these banners up, because we're not gonna be equipped to save you.
I know, when we got in the paper one time, eight, one came over and used their ladder truck and helped us out, but I don't know that we wanna have fire equipment for nothing to do.
That's just something, you know, we gotta keep in the back of our minds, when it's time to put these banners up, we might not be able to do it anymore.
Can you talk to Congress, Rick?
Not yet, Rick.
Never, never been.
That's what we were just talking about, we might have a bucket truck.
Have a bucket truck and one of those...
They have an all-train lift.
Yeah, an all-train.
Okay, well, maybe we'll have that figured out then in a week or two, sounds good. Any other questions for the streets? Okay. We're gonna move right down to, uh, Mr. Parkdans.
Hey, good timing.
You, I'll add my report, I'll just highlight a couple of things, the, uh, item three, the MS four, your report was delivered to E P on June twenty-ninth, so, we made it, uh, as I pointed out to you before, we do expect to get comments back on this report, because we didn't get some of the things done that we were supposed to, um, and then we'll work with staff to take care of that. First, you won't get fined, you'll just get a warning. On the MS four, one thing that didn't make it to my report, but this, uh, popped up, V E P is now sending letters to all of the municipalities that are MS up, EEP is now sending letters to all of the municipalities that are MS four municipalities, explaining to you the changes that are going to occur in the two thousand and eighteen permit, and they are significant. There are fees now being associated, there are, um, re, new requirements for pollutant reduction plans, um, it's just a lot of stuff. So you have time, we have to file first notice of intent in two thousand and seventeen, but I just wanted to warn you, if you're gonna be getting that letter, don't freak out, we're all on it, we're trying to figure out how it's gonna work. And the York County Chesapeake Bay pollutant reduction plan committee that we're part of is also working with EEP to try to figure out how maybe they could approach us with more of a regional approach. So there's a lot of activity going on, trying to figure out how we're going to handle it. But this is the old thing about water flows downhill, EPA is going after, after Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania is going after you. That's just the way it works.
Where are the new fees, pray tell?
The fees are five hundred dollars per year, or, now they're charging you to file your report.
Well, how about we start charging them?
Yes, of course.
You, you may, politically do what you'd like to do, but.
We're just making ordinance that says anything they want to do within our borough, we're gonna charge them a fee, a dollar a page. They can come start paying us.
It's okay with me, this is the state that doesn't have a budget, so. So I wanted to warn you about that, but don't, again, don't freak out when you get it. The, uh, Sussman Dodge Land Development Plan, we did, we thought they were gonna be here tonight, but they actually, they haven't even gotten the York County planning commission to comment yet, so they're, they'll probably be here in August. Um, street maintenance program, we have the contract to sign tonight. Locust Street, I want to talk to, um, whoever wants to be there, uh, next Monday, if you have a planning meeting, I'd like to do it before the planning meeting, if not, I'd like to do it at the, when you would have your planning meeting, if three o'clock or four o'clock, meet with Eric and Mike, or whoever wants to look at Locust Street.
And I did Brian, Eric, myself, and a minimal.
Yeah, whatever, we're gonna, you know, let's figure out what we're gonna do, we have two hundred thousand dollars, how far can we get, what do we want? Okay, cause Monday, or, I didn't know if you were gonna have a planning meeting for your meeting tonight.
Yes, we are.
You are, so three o'clock, you said?
Yep.
That'll work for everybody. And Ben's report is also attached in line, I do scan it in there, other than, uh, for Keith's benefit, he did file the final report, and they trust the South Front Street grant, once that's approved, they'll send us the last ten percent of that grant. They'll send us a check of four thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars.
We got that.
You got it? Then you must have approved it in the details? That's good, I like that.
Yeah, that was, uh, yeah, that was probably about the, the last half of June, on, right, four thousand, seven hundred and twelve?
Seven hundred and twelve.
Yeah. We got that.
Okay.
So is that a good thing? Can I spend that anyway you want?
Yep, cause you funded the money.
Okay. So it's back in general operating? What was that for, John?
That was the, we got a grant on Chesapeake Bay Trust for the South Front Street green improvements, and it was for design only, but it was, it was a one-hundred percent grant. So they've already, we did all the work and got it to the point of applying for a PANDO permit, you don't have any money to build, so that's the, that's what it's at. But it didn't cost the borough anything. And that was, but the grant was on the basis, so if we're gonna add green things to it and water quality improvements and things like that, unfortunately, until we find a grant that'll match it for construction, not going for it. So that's, that's part of it. Happy to answer any questions.
How does, how does this improve an extra talent in MS four impact us?
Well, it doesn't really, you get dragged into being an MS four because you're in the demographic reach of like for county, but once you qualify as an MS four, you follow under the same rules as any other MS four.
I just don't want you to have to pay for it twice.
No, you won't pay for it twice, you, you.
I don't want to pay for it all, but.
Yeah, and the MS four is based on population density, and coming from York, it couldn't get you any of that density, but coming from Loxley, they got some density, despite the fact that that ocean's there.
I couldn't convince them.
But actually, Matter Township touches you, so.
Any other questions for John? If not, we're going to move right to Mr. Mayor.
Our borough sign, there's, there's your sign at the end of the bridge, who wants it? Your, your, your temporary sign is good through, um, about the middle of August, so there's what.
So you gotta hang that on the bridge, or what?
No, you just kinda have to do what's, what's required by the permit. So, I told you I get enough, there is a permit, we need a little bit of concrete, need to pour the boots pool, put to the back cage. Do that, you're good.
All right, well.
What do you want to do with your sign, there hasn't been anything on it, I know since last month. Or of course, good soil, concrete.
All these looking at that, you have anything else?
Yeah, dude. I have a plan.
But we don't want it at the.
Anybody like eggplant?
No.
No? Greg, you like eggplant?
Yeah.
Do you? Square eggplant? It's yours. There, there's, uh, there's gonna be more, there's gonna be tomatoes, um, our department will help yourself up the square as things write them, I'm sure not gonna eat it because I'd be, it's healthy. Get an ethics violation out of it.
Yeah.
Well, it's gonna be five hundred calories more.
Over five.
What's that?
Bean plant here.
Well, if I ate it, then that I'd be benefiting from borough soil and. Mrs. McDonald has, uh, been promoting an idea, again, of the square, she liked the bench idea up there, so, um, and she believes that she has a way to, um, possibly funk the benches and so forth, but Mike and I talked a little bit, um, going back to the concept that we had a year ago, um, the concept would potentially be, half of the island around the flag would be done in, in previous pavers, the wire was soaked down through. Um, the possibility would be two benches, um, Mel had a nice picture last month of the concrete end type park benches, be one possibility. Uh, my vision always was the teak benches, um, so I guess what I was thinking is, you know, two benches and maybe a planter box in the middle, and then, you know, the possibility of maybe the word culture classes, the high school doing some landscaping in front. Question is, is council supportive of the idea?
If it's free to the borough, we will support.
Free to the borough.
Yep.
We'll, um, we'll start pushing some ideas around and see if we can get, get all of them here, and, um, you know, get some pictures together and just start pushing a little bit and see what happens, so. Um, property maintenance code, the last couple of weeks here, back in May, probably made a big cluster of activity, uh, everything kinda hit the fan all at once, everybody woke up, and things like haywire, and it's an hour in July, and as typical, I try to sort through where that all is, where it all stands, make sure everything's not been forgotten, and everything's going in the right direction. As of about three o'clock today, I'd say everything, all the complaints that we've gotten in have been, are being addressed, are in progress, um, are moving forward. Um, I have a list of about thirty or more that we're dealing with right now, some of them are headed for district court, some of them have been to district court, some of them have gotten NOBs, a bunch of them have gotten letters, uh, a fair number of them in the last month and a half have dropped off the list simply because they were resolved with the initial courtesy letter. Um, so that's quite a pile of work and quite a headache, would you say, Cam? But it's, it's, it's moving forward and, uh, going along, so, uh, yeah, that's where property maintenance stands for this year. Yes, Mr. Lord, how about that couch? You said, how about that couch? Kevin, I have a complaint for that couch, John, you, I, you know what I find interesting? And I was concerned about the couch, I live on Front Street, the couch is on Seventh Street. I've heard nothing from anybody about that couch closer than Front Street, so I've got my answer, more than cool enough, um, there's, there's, there's the list, if there was a complaint, we would address the complaint, that is, after all, our, our, our process, so.
Do you want your town to look like that, Adam?
No, I'm dealing with, it's, it's not my fault that the couch is there.
Just years ago, nobody had stuff like that sitting there.
Oh, yes, they did.
Rugs cans everywhere.
If, if there's a complaint that comes to the borough, then we can address it, it's a violation.
So maybe a rain lab.
Okay, it's the process, we can't start it without the process, we do not go, we do not have a process where we go around the borough and.
They get yours, they walked around.
The mayor does do that periodically, but I'm not going to do it all year long, and we have a process whereby the residents can do it, and if they wish to use it, it's there for them to use. So, um, it's a good process, it's a legal process. It, it's kind of interesting what happens with these complaints, quite often it happened to Tammy, um, we get these complaints in, and then we get people calling three days later wondering why it isn't resolved. Can you explain why that happens? Yeah, exactly.
Due process is what it's called.
Right, it is due process, for those who don't understand what due process is, can you expand on that?
Well, you have to give the alleged offender a certain amount of time to come to the compliance, and you usually start out with a courtesy letter.
Right.
Which is not required, however, most of the district magistrates like to see that you have tried to encourage voluntary compliance. Then you gotta do an NOB, and you, there's a timeframe, everything has a timeframe, thirty days or whatever, and that, a lot of people wait up till the last minute to do something, some push it all the way to the district magistrate. You can go to the district magistrate, they can deal, and it's to the court how you do, and it's gotta start all over again.
Our process is such that if the complaint comes in, the complaint is verified, the complaint then moves off the street to its administrator. Usually within a period of seven days at the most, they will go out and they will look at the situation, and then it might take another couple of days if there's a valid situation, and the letter will go out, the letter then is twenty days to apply to their office. After twenty days, then it's another seven to ten day period, they'll go out, once they realize that twenty days has passed, and they'll look to see if the violation has been taken care of. If it hasn't been, then it's a couple more days, the NOB is in the mail. The NOB is a legal document, you're meant to go to district court, you don't straighten out. That's a thirty day period, so then that moves. So, most of the weed situations that we have, Ross is gonna kill the weeds before, before we get around to being able to deal with this. So, the reason for all that is because people like their rights, even, and we can't scramble their rights even though they have a couch on their front porch, right, Mr. White? And so that's the process that we have, and it's a good process and a reason for it, so.
I'm just amazed that the couch keeps moving.
What's that?
I'm just amazed that the couch moves.
There's a lot of things that move around the borough. It's, it's very interesting, the games that people do, in fact.
Right. Just scat looking.
So that's it.
Any other questions for Neil? If not, everybody has the solicitor's report, invite any questions for the solicitor. Okay, um, committee reports, administration finance. All right. Public works, that puts us into the refuse.
Well, who wants to talk about trash?
Well, I have a question.
Okay. Go ahead.
And I don't understand that the authority has agreed to go two fifty, and then if we be another two fifty in the future? No?
The authority agreed to go to two fifty. If the truck breaks down within our contract in time, then we're gonna need one.
Our contracts through the end of the year?
Contracts through eighteen.
Eighteen.
Same as the, um.
It's a truck ain't gonna. So, if I understand correctly, then we're given the authority three-year contract with a two fifty increase, that is not gonna be year to year anymore, it's gonna be a twelve year.
No, we mean, we said we can go the rest of this year and the next two years, seven to eighteen.
And what after, we're about after two thousand and eighteen, we need to renegotiate contracts.
Just like you did with the other.
But the contract is void if a truck breaks down?
No. The contract, that, that stays the same, just like the meat sore plank, the debts are coming, which, I don't know. Is that right? No, we come through.
Twenty-four fifty?
Should be twenty-three fifty. Twenty-three fifty.
Someone else, oh, twenty-three, twenty-three dollars. Okay. All right, and I want to make up the cost of what we would be losing with the amount of the trash power, two million six dollars. On topic there.
Estimated around six bucks. Make it equal.
Which makes the charge two fifty, eighteen fifty. Here's my concern. I know he, we spent seven months going through this whole issue. We have our bids, I looked through the bids on Friday, since I couldn't be here for the best meeting. I'm not in favor of it. I'm, I'm looking at what we have now, I'm trying to compare apples to apples. I really can't do that because right now, we're not paying payroll on these gentlemen that are doing our trash shit, it's definitely the authority. So if we lose that, then we pay the payroll, because we're gonna have to hire people to help us with milling and to help us with plow. Not only that, when Mike and Alice say they need assistance, they have assistants, and these people know what they're doing, they provide a valuable service to us, not to mention the time it would take to have to go through the hiring process with temporary employees. Um, and then if that doesn't work out, then we have to start all over again and hire somebody else. I'm a little bit concerned about the fact that our guys were being followed around by said, um, bidders. I wouldn't appreciate if I'm not doing my job and someone who is. I wouldn't appreciate if I'm not doing my job and someone who is trying to get a contract and all that is following me around while I'm doing my job. That concerns me. Is that a standard practice for your company?
That is a standard practice in the industry. So that, um, you know, what you're getting into, we have to observe.
I understand, but you weren't awarded a contract, so therefore it concerns me that...
We have to price it before we bid it, and therefore we have to conduct due diligence sufficient enough to price it which would include following trash trucks around if it happens virtually all the time.
Well, another concern that I have regarding the trash issue, um, the yard waste. You know, we can't compare apples to apples on this one because, um... Republic, just public. Okay, so Republic, which is now a wildlife here. Their yard waste is able to accept a four foot by two foot tree or shrub or a flipping's bundle, no cans. So if you have smaller debris, such as shrub or a flipping's, you cannot fumble together, they're not going to accept that. How that issue would handle with your collection? Well, if you can't, if you can't, if you put out a cycle, then it's a good cycle.
I'll, I'll, you guys won't take the, uh, trash, uh, paper bags?
Take craft bags, certainly.
The round bag?
Yeah, that's, you know, practice throughout the county, five county areas.
Does it matter if we're sure we're clear on what...
Yeah, we take craft bags.
Okay.
But not everybody uses the trash bags. A lot of us use our trash cans and we take them. So that would be an added cost to the home owners where they would have to go out and purchase these special yard waste bags to dispose of their yard waste. And again, looking at after carrying from rec, that, you know, they'll go for two fifty unless of course the truck breaks down. We're still under what we need to cover if we added that six dollars. To keep it at a two, two ton a week, I think keeping a two, two ton a week pickup, again, comparing apples to apples, that's what we currently have.
So, what I need is a motion that excludes two bidders and accepts one bidder and whatever... Whatever council is applying to do.
Just on the current procedural point, right now, you're, you have a contract with the authority. But that, and that's just for the twenty sixteen, does that end at the end?
It's not up until November of twenty sixteen.
November of twenty sixteen, okay. So that's what this new contract, because I was only the person that there were two bidders for...
Yes, two new bidders and the current.
Well, well, I think what you have to do, I think the motion that you would have to deal with first is whether or not you're going to accept any of the bids that were advertised, that would ever submit. You're either gonna reject them all, or you're going to award it to the lowest bidder. And that would be the, the only two choices you have on that. What you do with the authority, then I suppose you have to negotiate another contract with them, right? Through, because they didn't bid on, my understanding is that they didn't bid on this current contract, right?
That was my concern as well, if we didn't get a bid from them, so how is that gonna work? I can't believe they went that route.
Well, it's a good question because we don't... You only have two bids in front of you, I don't...
Then we not come to the prior, back in November, with the increase of five dollars on the original contract. We went on a year-to-year contract before. It was kept, put on the shelf, put on the shelf until a new regime came in. And that's when they decided to, so we were under the understanding, when we were already under contract for this year, and we were trying to get a five dollar increase, which we dropped to two fifty. That's before you, they could have accepted the bid in November, and that's as far as it went. They went the full distance of going out and getting more bids, which they already knew what our bid was.
Mr. McDonald is a municipal authority member.
Just to clarify that, that's not what my understanding was, but I only took the seat in January. So, I don't know what happened in November, okay? Uh, and if they would have accepted it, then we wouldn't be having this conversation.
And that's what I understood it was actually. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Well, you weren't, you weren't there either at that point, were you?
I was on the board, but I wasn't in the position I am now.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I was on the board that summer.
And Mr. Baranski's advice, if I understood correctly a few meetings back, was if we stayed with the authority, then nothing would change. We wouldn't have to really do anything other than reject bids because we're staying under the current contract.
Right.
That's if, I'm not saying I have heard and understood everything correctly.
And just to understand, I was very serious about getting these bids because I wanna know where we were. Because for years, we, you know, we've had the municipal authority, we'd only complain about the service. Because we're, you know, we give tattletale service, as I would put it. So I only complain about that, but, um, but, and I go to the municipal authority meeting before I sat on this council. So I, you know, I heard this was coming, you know? Um, and that, and I was concerned about it. And I wanna see the numbers, but, I mean, and you may not understand all the intricacies of what we're talking about here with this shifting of the, of the help and all that kinda stuff. But there's an actual number we have to add on to any bid that you give us to make, otherwise we're gonna have to, you know, move employees, hire employees. And that number works out to be about six bucks a month per person. So that's kind of the shifting number here for us, just so you understand what's going on.
Sure, a couple of things I, I think you might be missing. Um, you know, I saw a large pickup fee schedule, which wouldn't be part of that trash bid. There is one, one item included in there, so I don't, I haven't heard of that.
See, and, yeah, and if I remember you guys...
There's one bulk item per week. Included in that.
Right, without a tag, without, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, I think, uh, somebody mentioned earlier how clean Hallenborough was. We, we do the trash service in Hallenborough, and if there's a cat laying around, we'd get a call and we'd pick it up and take it away and, no problem.
But how's that, but how would that work though? I mean, you don't wanna end up taking furniture, right?
There's one, uh, bulk item per week per home. So we have a state body truck, you know, our drivers, you'd call it in, the trash drivers, you'd call it in the state body. State body trucks drive around many municipalities.
If everybody in the borough had a couch or... I mean theoretically, yes, whatever happened, I would, you know? And if we did, you guys would consider that a big time around.
As crazy as that sounds, contractually, we're all getting to provide that service, yes.
But our trash does take away pretty much stuff, the item without.
I'm just making sure.
That's not why homes are clean, it's clean because we can take all the stuff.
But yes, thank you. Well, I don't know, Mr. Solicitor, what we, what is, giving you direction here on this, is how we proceed, because this is new territory. And we, I don't know, had the borough ever bid out to trash before?
I don't think so, two thousand twelve, two thousand, I mean, two thousand one, two thousand two.
I was gonna say the same words a lot of times here.
Two dollars too.
So I don't know, you know, of course, I don't even counsel for a couple of months.
Fourteen years. Never changed. In my opinion, you, you advertise for bids and you've got bids, so now you have to give either reject them or you either accept. A little bit, one of the two, that's your options. If you reject all the bids, then you're gonna have to go back to the authority. I don't, and I, I don't know, because I, I, I feel all the time, and I don't know if contracts are, the terms have already been... It seems that the terms have already been negotiated, just the right word.
Yeah, we know what the terms are, I mean, it's just, you know...
But then you have these extra services, apparently they're being provided.
Yeah, and, and my thing, everybody in the council understands what the municipal authority is offering. I'm, I'm just concerned because I don't wanna be in a situation where we did something wrong if we decided to go that way.
Well, the only thing that you do wrong is are you getting the best price for trash service? And so, I think the difficulty over here is that you have the prices, I think, for the trash pickup. And what those services are, one item, large item, and then you apparently calculated what the additional cost to you will be if you lose those services that the authority is also providing.
I mean, it's pretty clear in the paper, which, you know, that we're, we're just better to stay with the municipal authority, or as I can say. Just some of the numbers stand still, I mean, I don't forget.
Even if you have to go with the extra two fifty?
Even with the extra two fifty, it still comes out to be, some of it's got to be sort of less money for the same thing. Um, plus, there's a whole lot of hidden things that if we go with an outside service that are gonna come up, jump up in the weeds at some point, things are not even able to consider. Some of the things, personally, you mentioned, but...
Some of them, because it's new territory.
And I don't know, I don't know that the savings is, you know, if they're worrying, and I, I don't see that there are even the numbers in just about taking that risk. As far as I can, just speaking myself.
Well, all right, it sounds like you reject all the bids.
That's the feeling of the council.
I just have one question for Keith.
Okay.
Last meeting Scott had asked what it roughly costs for two part-time employees, okay? So let me ask you this. To cover the thirty-six thousand, we get the license fee, and two part-time employees, a rough number would be eighty-six thousand. How much would we raise taxes to cover eighty-six thousand a year?
Eighty-six.
Roughly eighty-six thousand.
One mil. Yeah, where's the eighty-six coming from?
Just if we hired two part-time guys, roughly, uh, fifty weeks out a year, twelve fifty an hour, and that doesn't associate, that's just wages, it wouldn't be insurance, nothing else.
One mil of tax rates is ninety-nine. So you're, you're saying those employees in your mind cost fifty grand a year, and thirty-six thousand licensing fee for a total of eighty-six thousand, that's what you're suggesting?
That's what the number I would think, if we had to replace and hire two part-time employees, would be roughly fifty thousand a year. Okay, and Scott had asked for a number to be put together. Brian, I discussed a little bit today, and in my head, I come up roughly with to cover that loss would be about eighty-six thousand.
And that's not, without...
Again, that's not advertising for employees, it's not paying somebody to stream the applications or anything else, that's just a number. That's what's gonna cost us to have two more people in the books.
I'm working with the numbers that I have, so anything that's projected out is, is a new thing. Because we never, we never considered hiring two, you know, two part-time people. So, that, that's probably, at that number, Mike, I would have to say we are having to provide far more work at a borough level to be able to substantiate two part-time people coming aboard. Far more than what we are now, what the authority is now absorbing. Because I think Brian had given us figures, we went over the, the knowing part, which is less than, which is less than two thousand hours a year. Okay, so that's less than two thousand. So if you're talking fifty grand, and you're talking about an awful lot of hours that would have to be given to the borough above what their, you know, what our trade-off is with the authority, that's, that's a heck of a lot of money. A heck of a lot of hours.
Well, that's just, and that's not saying everybody's employed all the time, because we don't know snow wise and everything else, what we're gonna come up with. But a good number to cover that, in my opinion, was that number. That's pretty much, are them guys possibly employed all year? Yes. Are they gonna be employed all year? We don't know that. It, it was just a number that says, it puts a number to have two part-time employees.
Two thousand hours from now, ten bucks an hour, that's twenty grand. And of that twenty grand, that's probably six hours a week just for the park, with a fifteen thousand dollar lawn mower. Now, when fifteen thousand dollar lawn mower breaks, we've got another fifteen thousand dollar lawn mower.
There's a lot that add up to, but Scott had asked about what would it cost to add two part-time employees. Okay, and that was the answer that I came up with, in my head, was roughly that.
I'm thinking it's not just a, just so we're understanding, that it's not quite the same thing as trying to find out how much we would have to add to a bill to be apples to apples where we are now. Because we're far above that, we're not considering hiring part-time people. We were already considering what would happen, what are the part-time people we would need to hire in order to do a lawn mower, okay, the grass cutting? So, that's the numbers that we would use to reflect the apples to apples we have, not the additional stuff.
So Scott, so on your estimation, it would be pretty much worse.
Yeah.
Much worse.
I look at the worst case scenario, if we're gonna do it.
I mean, I think I was on the conservative side, probably here on the, on the worst side. It is probably gonna end up being worse than it was.
But even if you took, where you're being conservative and he's taking being on the high side, if you took the middle of that, which is probably about where it is.
The only thing about all this is, is I understand it, but I don't understand it.
Ah, it's, it's fuzzy, I mean, you gotta try and get your hand, but it's fuzzy for some reason, you know?
Well, it's fifteen out of eight, I need a motion.
I need a motion to reject the bids that are escaped from the public services.
I have a second.
I'll take a personal motion.
Any other questions about the motion? All those in favor? I oppose.
I'd say I'd agree to the motion.
Motion carried.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate you.
Thanks for taking the time to debate.
Yeah, no problem, thanks for...
I say that all then.
Was it current, private statements, you want?
Sure.
I'm Nicole, I have a ten.
Thanks.
The other thing, all I ask, they got a bag, the financials. Go back. Back to the bids.
Do you want us to take care of it?
I think that it has just got worse.
Also, that gets out of your way particularly. And the other flags for, um, for the bids, right?
I think, yes, I think, well, I think they should be notified that the council rejected our bids. But to thank them for...
For this portion of the receipt.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, still on the other side, um, if we're willing to give the authority two fifty, three fifty, five dollars, whatever, somebody would like to come up with a number?
We did, it's agreed upon two fifty, and I think that's where we need to go forward with it until something else changes.
I need a motion to that effect.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue service with the municipal authority, increasing the fee from twenty-three fifty, adding two fifty to come up with a total of twenty-six dollars a month.
Twenty-three, twenty-five.
It's twenty-three dollars, twenty-five.
So it'd be twenty-five fifty, okay, I had to shoot it down. But, um, again, I'll make a motion and we raise it to fifty, go on to twenty-five fifty, stay with the authority.
That's it? Twenty-three, he's twenty-four. It'll be twenty-six. It'll be twenty-six.
That's what I had, it was twenty-six.
Twenty-three fifty plus two fifty. Twenty-three fifty plus twenty-three.
It's twenty-three dollars.
Then we're good, twenty-five, twenty-five fifty. No, I have one thing broken down, and first I had something else broken down. Okay, I'm doing it. Yeah, it's not the ordinance, that would go back to our resolution, just raise, we already had an ordinance, we would raise it, use the resolution.
Is there... What resolution we want?
I think we already had it, but it was for five dollars, I think there's resolution number four. It's not passed, but there's one that's already gotten associated, because it was only agenda. And it's been...
I see, we need a resolution, but there's also an ordinance in our...
John, I can see why John... Mine's very, I think, mine's more substantial, I'm sure anyway.
There is, but it's shortened, it's just been over the year, every, every November, it just automatically reduces itself. And none of the solicitors have ever questioned the auto renewal factor, because it was all...
I thought McDonald said, the authority was the before, a three-year contract.
Yeah, because that's what they wanted, so we would go to three, we would go with the same through two thousand eighteen and two fifty maybe. And two fifteen, where if you wanna just renew it automatically, or go back through all this, that's up to...
But, but, don't you also need a resolution to include two fifty if this truck breaks down? Is that part of the deal?
The, the first two fifty, basically, is just to cover the cost, because...
Let me explain what he's, but the, we originally went to five dollars. What it was, was to subside the debt, we're in debt, to get rid of that debt, to bring us up, so we're breaking even. Not making money, breaking even. Then, once that's paid off, we continue that provided, we're putting it into account to cover the new truck when it breaks down. But the borough asked us to go to two fifty and not put any money away, just get ourselves out of debt.
Well, you're actually working in the red right now.
Right, we're in the red right now, over twenty thousand.
They've been doing about the old market, yeah, for years.
So, if the truck breaks down, then we can go into what they call the debt service, and actually raise it on the, say, that out, to the council to do it. That's my understanding, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay.
The source, we were allowed to add twenty-eight dollars. Now we're going to build to cover the source debt. I may be wrong. So, because it doesn't go anywhere but in this stack, and so the trash thing.
So really, at this point, we can't hand a motion unless we have the resolution in front of us.
Probably correct.
So, the resolution for the planning...
Well, yes.
But this won't take effect until December first, right? Because the contract...
That's the next question.
The contract runs through November.
But they need the snap, they needed it in November last year.
They need the money before, they need the money.
They've been operating with a debt since then.
That's a really small town.
Charlie, I think we're opening the existing contract to increase the fee, and then extending it to...
And extending it to years. That's why I like them.
I'm glad you come into me. He's been living a really long time, he's really old. He doesn't look like it, but he is.
I can't even find that. Charlie knows that.
And he's been here a really long time.
Okay, so we're gonna need a... Yes?
So, we need a resolution.
We're gonna need a resolution for the planning meeting that incorporates the two hundred fifty cents. The motion that Mike made died from like a second. And we will take care of it for the planning meeting.
He was writing the resolution, so we have one actually here.
You said one was already prepared, right?
I believe one was already prepared, I have to go back and pull it.
Well, I made a note here, so.
Yeah, he prepared one, but the numericals in it are not, are not correct.
What's that resolution say?
I have, I would have to go full setup.
We should, we should get some clarity on that on Thursday. We should get some clarity on this on Thursday to make sure we're on the same page.
I, I'm gonna suggest it be something very simple, you just amend the existing contract, increase the fee to two fifty and extend it by two years as an amendment.
Same, much easier.
That sounds like a good resolution to me.
Why don't we change it then? What if you use that?
It's official with license.
You know, he works for ten bucks.
Oh, yeah?
Don't get any ideas. He got me for something.
Okay, that sounds like that's a game plan for that, for the planning meeting. So we can keep moving right along, we have the permits for the borough side. Um, that's complete. Uh, we do have a handicap special parking request, I don't know if anybody else needs to look over this, if they have any questions, if it needs to wait for the planning meeting, or if somebody wants to make a motion.
You guys looked at Crystal and Eric?
Yeah.
I don't see an issue with it.
Are you gonna put it on fourth, are you gonna put it on this one?
Believe she parks on Fourth Street, I believe.
I think she does, is it Jackie? Yeah, she parks on Fourth Street, is she, isn't it standard? It's like a green, yeah, now, I don't know.
Yeah, she, she parks on Fourth.
Yeah, I don't know where she's requesting it.
Didn't she have a note on her application?
She wants Fourth and One.
I think she had a note, though, if I read correctly, on Fourth Street, but I'm not...
But she parks up, but I believe when I talked to Holly, she wanted it more at her mouth, because of the issues with the...
Right.
Which would put it right at Fourth Street before the yellow line.
Yeah.
Because there's a crosswalk there, so then behind the crosswalk, you'd have to go and hide that line.
I think she really wants it where the sidewalk comes out of the house. I think that's where she prefers to park.
That's on Fourth Street?
She, she parks, like, like here's her stair, like, to go onto the patio, and she parks above that a little. So essentially, there's two parking spots behind her.
Right.
Right? So I don't know where she's requesting it.
As a space behind wherever you're putting this space, you need one or two parking spaces.
Right, I don't want to take away an extra parking space, just because we're trying to accommodate it.
Yeah, it, it has to be, you know, there either has to be like one or two spaces, you know, where this...
There'd be at least one.
Yeah.
How many spaces in there now, really? It's not really marked out.
Right.
We're gonna start marking a specific area, then we're have to account for that. Yeah, but she knows where you're going, right? Yeah, twenty feet. I'm confident that Mike can take it.
Yes, it's a major issue for her.
I make a motion to break the station, any kind of special parking space, whoa. Or along Monah Street, on the Fourth Street side, on the street of Eustis.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions on the handicap parking spot? All those in favor? Oppose?
She did.
Alright, uh, three conclusions.
You were, I'll certainly defer to the solicitor, but you awarded that contract to him last month, I don't believe we need another motion to sign the contract.
Okay.
No, I think it's approved.
So, we just need to sign it.
There's nothing, Pendott's not involved, right?
Yeah, yeah, we look for fuel money.
But it's not a Pendott plot, only because they always want a motion for the chairman to sign something.
Yeah, but it...
Okay.
That should be fine.
Okay.
John, do you know when they're planning on starting anything?
I do not know, Corey will set up a pre-construction meeting.
Okay, that moves us right down to Locust Street Storm Range. And that's also just signature on this Canadian blockchain contract. That's a little simple, you either sign the contract, you get the money, or you don't sign the contract, you don't get one million. I'll sign the contract. Alright, uh, three clauses.
I, I would recommend that we get the emotional out of you.
That one would...
Oh. That would be a motion to approve the contract.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I made a motion to approve the contract.
Get the one in two thousand sixteen, CDBG, improvements on Locust Street Range.
Right. Have a motion, have a second?
I'll second.
Any, any questions on the motion? All those in favor? I, I oppose. Three clauses.
I make a motion to close Front Street between Monah and Locust. Locust Street between North Front and North Second, North Second between Locust and Pelham, and Four Sixty Two between North Second and Columbia, to close the bridge.
What are we doing here?
That doesn't make sense. We can't just close, we can't close Four Sixty Two.
We can't close the street, right?
They have Pendott's, we don't, we don't. Do you have, I'll get that in here? Mr. Marriott?
Uh, Leaky, 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 Society. Leaky, Leaky, Society.
Oh, we don't need that.
Where's the sign of the...
I'm guessing John Ray, right? Yes, Leaky, Leaky, Society.
They're already having an offer mission to close the bridge from Leaky to receive.
They're asking for, I guess, is, do they even state the length of time they would be on the street standing?
Fifteen minutes.
So, and how do they intend on closing the streets, that's...
She has not gotten back to me on that, but Dean Marriott has approved it as of May nineteenth.
And they're doing this in October.
Friday night, so they'll, they know when they're issued a permit, he said email services their permit. This is a Friday night?
Who?
Chief, this is from Chief Farmer over in Columbia. And blew up Dean's, from Pendott.
Here's my concern with it, is I don't feel that they've addressed how they intend to close the streets and keep those people that are walking safe. I feel that they need to address the safety issues before we approve it.
Who's the remister? Who's it by for?
The Leaky and Leaky Society.
I mean, they either need to work directly with the fire police, or the police department, fire department even, and make sure that they have adequate traffic control for those people that are on the street. And if they're asking for closure, then they need to be notifying the borough with their attendance, if they need barricades and things of that nature.
No, we also have to take into consideration, if it's gonna be like fifteen minutes, that means that Mike's gotta get on the clock an hour before that, put all the barriers out, they have their fifteen-minute thing, then he's gotta take another half hour to put all the barriers away.
We're not, we would put them out the day before, or that morning.
Let them put them out.
Fire police normally put them out, but again, they need to have some type of coordination.
We don't just shut the bridge.
Then, of course, it's in Columbia, we don't want any, most of the bridges are in the shot, even if it was.
You got Columbia as a thought, correct?
Yeah, we want Columbia's response, so it looks like they're just...
This is Pendott's approval right there.
And Columbia is agreeing to you, as their fire police, I believe.
Yeah, and that, yeah, but Ed Keller, he was also on here too.
But again, I don't, as, we need to verify, if our police are involved, do they require barricades? What, how are they closing the roads, and for what length of time? Well, I can walk the bridge in fifteen minutes. And we have the planning meeting, correct? We're having a planning meeting, does that give you enough time, Tammy, to contact them?
Yeah, I can reach out to Tara.
And I mean, if she needs additional assistance, you can pass her my phone number, and I coordinate a little bit with the fire department and stuff as well, if they need that assistance. Or maybe she's already in touch with them, I'm just not aware of it.
And that'll answer a few questions, and then we can actually get this taken care of, there are plans.
I mean, you're wanting me to ask for...
I would like to know how they intend to keep the people that are walking safe from the traffic. Are they adding fire police escort, are they adding fire police at each intersection?
I just wanna know, is she having fire police at both ends?
I mean, like I said, just pass her my number, she can deal with you and I, she can come to the planning meeting if she wishes, but we need to know how she intends to close the road to keep the people away from vehicles.
Yeah, I'm just gathering that she's got it from Columbia's side.
I think the majority of it's on rent, so, I guess the bridge was the easy part.
Yeah, they just gotta close one street, they just close this bridge for an hour, probably, and that's it.
The formula's a little too simple, too. Crystal, can you make a motion to table that motion?
I make a motion to table the street, the closure request from Leaky and Leaky Society, and...
Any questions? All those in favor? I, I... Okay, um, public safety? We, everybody will have this week to go over our several sort of stuff, and we may or may not be able to get it, and it probably will depend on how many questions there are next week, and whether we find some issues that we're not happy with, maybe it'll go to y'all this week. But, uh, we'll over the state of stuff.
Can I get a copy of that? Can you email me a copy of that?
He's just a little sort of chairman, he should, chairman, he should...
I'll email you, I just got this after, literally, like...
Yeah, we just got forty-eight.
Yeah.
When you distribute? The coffee and the eggplant.
No, I don't want the eggplant.
I'm good enough to drop the eggplant here. Where's the, where's the eggplant?
Deal?
Thank you.
Deal?
I don't, um, does he need two?
No, one's good enough.
White reading, John. That didn't work.
I don't know anything about civil service.
Thanks, John.
Okay, the next thing is the fire, fire funding report, which, uh, this is what the union had given to home borough and township officials during our eight month MCA meeting. Which shows what, uh, boroughs and municipalities are currently funding for the fire departments. There's really not anything that we can do, other than show up to meetings and try to get other people to increase their fundages to match ours, which in fact, they did that. It would take a lot, or, offering the burden off of us, so that in the future, we don't have to raise ours to make sure that our fire departments can care and can pay the bills.
Could, could we have the mayor explain a little bit?
I was waiting for that. Yes, I will do.
For some, some accounts that are confused.
I'll, I'll try to confuse you more, okay? If you take the, the sheet that at the top says current property assessments, there's a number one at the bottom of that. And then take the other one that starts with Helen Township, point zero 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 three, put a number two at the bottom of that. A little rusty here, it's been a couple weeks, but, our current, this is a, this, this, this kinda goes to the part of what you're going to be dealing with in a couple months of making your budget. If you go under proper, current property assessments, skip down to the third line, Wrightsville Borough. Your total assessment in the borough, everything, every property value tabulated up, added together, your total assessment is ninety-five million, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four. That's Eric's property, that's Carrick and Marty's property, that's Neil's property, that's Crystal's property, that's Greg's property, everybody's property.
If I understand that correctly, about seventy-two million of that is residential, about ten is industrial, commercial, and the rest is...
That could be.
Not paying any...
Exactly.
Oh, there's a, yeah, you're correct, there's a larger, there's a larger amount of taxes in there. And also, I just saw in the paper last week, Lancaster County Commissioners have taken action, they're going to reassess. I'll bet you, your kind of won't be far behind, I digress. So, that is the number right there, that you apply your millage rate that you approve every year for both real estate tax and fire tax. You take the millage rate that you approve here, and apply it to that ninety-five million dollar number, okay? And that's what gives, if you take the current fire tax in Wrightsville Borough, which is currently six tenths of a mil. Come down here under current fire tax millage, you see Wrightsville Borough, point zero 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 six, that's six tenths of one mil. You take that number, that's zero 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 six, and multiply it times ninety-six million, you come up with the revenue for the fire department every year. It's in parentheses, fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven. Okay? So, what, what is currently happening, just like your refuse thing, there's a lot of history that nobody understands anymore. But what's happening is Wrightsville Borough does collect the fire tax. Helen Borough also collects the fire tax. Helen Township no longer collects the fire tax. About fourteen years ago, all three municipalities agreed that they were going to start collecting the fire tax. The fire tax was set at that time at three tenths of a mil. The arrangement was that Helen Borough would give their proceeds to Helen Fire Department. Wrightsville Borough would give their proceeds to Wrightsville Fire Department. Helen Township take their proceeds and split them fifty-fifty, half to Helen, half to Wrightsville, okay? In the last fourteen years, a couple of things have happened. Helen Borough, at one point, they had, I believe they sold their water system, York Water. And as a result, their coffers, their reserves, their bank accounts went to such a level that state law required of them to drop their tax rate, okay? When they did that, for some reason, they also dropped their fire tax rate, they dropped it from three tenths of a mil to two point four tenths of a mil. Then, at some point, Helen Township decided that it was going to be easier and simpler, I believe, for them to do away with the fire tax, and what they would do, would they be then taking the equivalent of what the fire tax would generate out of their general fund, and split that. What our treasurer does every year, you heard the forty-four thousand number tonight, he sent it to the fire department. But, the real number is fifty-seven thousand. The reason he didn't send fifty-seven thousand is because it didn't come in yet, okay? It will come in. Eight years from now. So, he works very hard to try to keep that accurate and tabulated and keep track of that, it's, it's a real stunt to do that. Helen Township no longer has to do that. They say, well, okay, our knowledge is this, our assessment is this, do the math, this is what we're giving. And the numbers that they provided may flesh that out, but even though they do some creative things, they give fuel to the fire departments, fire departments pull up with their tank, and they pump fuel. Um, the army truck that Wrightsville Fire Department has, um, I think they put up some equipment into that last year, and when you take their fuel, and their monetary contributions, and their, um, donations towards equipment, it comes up very, very close to that, three tenths of a mil, okay? So, what, what I did, um, and the reason this, this all came about is because the fire departments are saying, hey, our facilities are outdated, our equipment is outdated, and there's been any number of proposals floating how to deal with that, big sales, um, and there was fundraising drive, there was, uh, there was all kinds of creative stuff, and it's like, guys, you know what, nobody's gonna do this, we've talked about this for three years.
Your wife won't bake enough cakes to get a million dollars.
So, what I, what I came back, I was frustrated about three months ago, I'm tired of hearing about big sales, I'm tired of hearing about fundraisers that are never gonna happen, I'm tired... Guys, you realize Wrightsville Borough is like in six tenths of a mil, you guys are at three tenths of a mil, and I said to Helen Fire Chief, if everybody, all three, were at the same level of funding that Wrightsville is at, I said, after X number of years of doing this, there'd be a million dollars in the pot. I said, why aren't we doing this? And I said, um, I said, Wrightsville did do it.
Here, here's, here's something additional, I don't know where they're up here.
Go ahead.
They'll wrap that one up.
Go ahead.
My concern is not only that would be equal, but that Helen Township should be paying more.
And it would be if it was more.
No, 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 more percentage wise, because if my understanding is correct, you know, seventy-seven percent by the fire company numbers that I read, seventy percent of the calls are outside of the borough. If I asked you the number of fires that were inside the borough in the past fifteen years, I know somebody can give me that number, and it's not a very big number. Okay, so, we're doing a lot of outside borough fire trucks, or, you know, they're giving us fuel rate, but we're using the fuel that's outside the borough. So, you know, until those numbers would reach a percentage, which to me says that, before you start asking the citizens of Wrightsville for more money, in any way, these other people should be, and I think that's what Neil was going for, these people should be piling up, and not only equally, but they should be piling up in excess. However that works out with in-kind contributions and money, somebody's gotta do those numbers, if they don't want it, I mean, you, you can't hit the people of Wrightsville anymore for this, okay? So, go ahead.
Never my intent to hit people of Wrightsville for anymore. And I will address, just my thought process on what, and I understand that, you know, living the larger percentage of calls, potentially in Helen Township, I, I understand. Another way to look at this, and, you know, is for people to figure out how to, a formula, or whatever you want, however you want to do this. There's a cost to being prepared, and that cost, I think, can be borne through these numbers equally. Then there's a cost of what actually happens. So, however that formulation works out, somebody else is gonna have to decide that.
But I'll bet you if we track that, and the fire company does track it, I'll bet you if we track that over the past ten years, or however long this has been discussed, I'll bet you we're gonna find that seventy percent number or thereabouts, it's probably pretty accurate for all those years.
That would be an interesting exercise.
You could pull this up and easily figure out that, just like Tim does, says, this many calls was sent to Wrightsville Borough, this many calls to Helen Township. Need to do the same thing with the fire report.
And I don't want our fire department to have everything they need, and then some, but let's remember that, you know, they're doing a awful lot of work outside the borough, and somebody should be compensating us for that. I understand that everybody will help you out when you have a fire, and we'll come help you out when you have a fire, but guys, you know, we're this big. And Helen Township is that big, you know, I mean, especially if you look at what they're electing.
Right here, Helen Township is forty, four hundred and twenty-four million, and Wrightsville is thirty-five.
Yes, and they're looking for a prime industrial ground.
So, so I understand, so, the, 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 the thing that was being discussed is how to, you know, deal with capital expenditures. You know, they, they have operating, they're operating expenses, they're, they're working with that, that's, that's okay. What do you do for additional capital expenditures and capital costs? Go to page two. Yeah, let's, let's try to tie it to the chase here, I'm just, because what, what I was trying to get around to is if, if three municipalities would do something on a consistent basis, let me see here, it gets a little bit scattered around. Basically, if you go to the first asterisk toward the bottom of the page, after five years, three municipalities, Helen Borough, Helen Township, Wrightsville Borough, five years of collecting and retaining an additional three, Wrightsville stays at six tenths, Helen Township goes to six tenths, Helen Borough goes to six tenths. Helen Borough gives three tenths to operations, Helen Township gives three tenths to operations, fifty-fifty, Wrightsville-Helen. Wrightsville gives three tenths to operations, all three municipalities then retain three tenths, and they do that for five years. And after five years of doing that, there being accumulated eight hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Take that, split it in half, you've got a whopping big down payment on two pieces of apparatus, penis and payments after that, you can start over and do it again. If that's six tenths of a mil is too much for everybody to bite off, fine, go back to the top of the page, I've got it broken down, what happens if you go to four tenths, five tenths, and so on. But, everybody, big sales aren't gonna work. The other few municipalities need to, so I presented this, and I was Wrightsville Fire Chief's best friend for about another two hours. When the worry went after that. Helen Township, they have a problem. Their problem is the upper board supervisors just spent a huge whopping sum of their reserve before they ran out of office. So, they're gonna get the whole one out there. Phil Smith is very supportive of this concept, he doesn't think that the rest of supervisors going to it, he thinks he can, but he doesn't think he can do it for a while. So, Helen Borough, they're looking at, if it's an extra five dollars per property, that, that's too much, they can't do it. They're just gonna, you know, um, Helen's Fire Chief at one down in Borough, it's council meeting the next week, and the report I got back from that meeting was, he spent all of his report talking about how they rescued ducks from somebody's swimming pool, never mentioned this. Uh, the mayor who's at our meeting where I brought this all to them, didn't say a word, council president, didn't say a word, so... You know, it was an interesting exercise, my guess is, everybody just wants to wait for crisis, so...
So, so you can't be, you didn't make any progress, basically, is what you're saying, that, that...
He had... It's frustrating, you know?
I hear you, it sounds good.
The fire department is, is a challenge to work with. It, it, it's just challenging, it's, it's always people challenges, okay? We absolutely need what they provide, and they do an extremely good job of it, they need the equipment. Their rescue is, how old?
Ninety, ninety-six.
Yes, it's twenty years old.
Yeah, ninety-six.
And my response to that is, we could put a whole lot of this miles on it.
Well, and you're, you're potentially correct.
Is it time to redraw what's called the boxes?
My, my, my look at this is, it's, it's a three municipality, I think that what they did was a great thing, you know, three municipalities have tried to do this together, but they gotta do this together.
We're doing our part.
That's what I'm saying, I'm like, guys, so, you know, here are the numbers to work from, I'll happily explain them over and over again until everybody's tired of me explaining them, but this is the way it's done, this, this is truly the way it's done, Wrightsville is where Wrightsville should be.
Well, the other thing too is, the bigger picture here, nobody's went to Springsberry, Manchester Township, York City, and because we have so many qualified volunteers, and we're first due as a Rick Rescue Company, these paid fire departments are asking us to come help them.
I don't think if you go ask them for money, you're in a good, you're in a good...
Oh, I know we're not gonna get any money from them.
I know, the answer's no, it's that simple.
But, what do we, it's kinda like we're stuck between a rock and a hard place, because
You just stop doing it.
Sometimes we need their ladder truck to come here. Because we don't, we can't afford a ladder truck.
And how often is that? When was the last time we had a fire in Wrightsville, and we needed a ladder truck that big for it?
We're going fire up on Long Street.
Right, right below your house, we needed one out back, and we needed one at the front. Columbia was in the front, there was another one in the back. There was two in the back.
Long Street, the, uh, the property, what was in the five hundred block, that was last winter.
Yeah.
So, that's...
We had three.
One or two, how many fires?
Well, every fire, there's always gonna be, if we can get them in there, there's gonna be one in front, one in back.
This is an ongoing expense, this is something that we're paying, the, the, the citizens of Wrightsville are carrying an undue portion of this.
I, I don't know that...
And we're enduring an undue portion of sirens going off.
Well, I don't know that, personally, I don't feel badly about, I'm not, well, I do approve the fire tax every year as mayor. Council votes on it, the mayor does sign the ordinance. I don't feel that I'm imposing unfairly to the residents for their, you know, for their costs, I feel they're getting a good bang for their buck. What concerns me is the strain that it does in fact put on the fire department, and the strain that it does in fact put on the equipment. And that's the equipment that we rely on here, and the strain affects here, and, and it's the inequity of the whole situation, you're never gonna get perfect, my, my, my approach was...
I'm not looking for perfect, you know, I'm just looking for equitable, or something close to that.
And that's where I was, that's where I was at, I, I...
I'm not arguing with you, I'm, I'm on the same boat with you.
What I was trying to do was deal with what I could deal with.
Yeah, I think it was a good idea, and I think you should still push it.
And if nothing says, we can't ask Chad to go see if he can pound the pavement a little bit, and ask for some money from Springsberry or Manchester, maybe even if...
Springsberry would be a big one.
But, even if they sent us twenty thousand, then went directly into the fire department coffers, it'd be something. You know, if Manchester would send five thousand, it'd be something, and it pays for fuel.
Well, as much as I see that name on the record, I, you know, somebody's gotta start paying something for those, you know, like you said, we're gonna need to piece of equipment, you know, we're talking, whether we're talking about trash trucks, or we're talking about the fire trucks, so many miles on the end, and so many trips.
Well, you know, they, they...
The good thing with those Detroit diesels, they're good for a half a million miles.
The transmission might not fit.
Yeah, but, yeah, but if you... And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we contain it to Wrightsville, but Wrightsville's one mile, okay?
Yeah.
That's a lot of trips outside of Wrightsville, okay? And once we start coming outside of Wrightsville, you know, somebody's gotta kick in, you know?
It's, I, I can't, I, I don't quite understand the logic of some of the other people that I think about is...
They're giving some for free, that's what I understand.
I guess I do, and I, I, I don't, I don't...
And they're not gonna stop until you stop, because they're not gonna voluntarily not take the free things. And they're not gonna stop until you stop, because they're not gonna voluntarily not take the free things.
I've never been in favor of stealing from other people. That, I've never been in favor of that. I, I don't, and, and that's kind of what I feel is going.
Theoretically, Route Thirty is not our responsibility. But you look at the boxes for Columbia, for Hellen, for Springsberry. Because we are a rescue company, we are the first ones on the box every time, Mar and I.
Well, who makes that decision?
Hellen Township's part of the responsibility, West Hemphill Township.
Yep, Springsberry, all of them are, you know, they say.
So, they're just volunteering our services, basically, what's going on?
Well, as long as we agree to it, you know? I could tell you, it would hit the fan if we said we were not going to Route Thirty anymore.
Who's agreeing to it? Is it us, or is it the fire department?
Well, we, we kinda have to be somewhat in agreement with what they're doing as far as the logistics and stuff.
So far, our interactions with the fire department have not been very cooperative here recently. So, I, I'm concerned about their ability to work on this.
Wait, can I ask a question? Why do we get a West Hemphill, I mean, why wouldn't, not here yet? I think we should help everybody that orders this, like Columbia Grill, York City, Hellen. But why would we delay over here, they have neighbors that order them? Or down in Sprigways Gap? They have all that.
I'm telling you, it's, the whole fire department system, now, this is, over the past ten years, Columbia's went from five fire stations to one. And it's happening everywhere.
And I, and I thought, my God, how are you ever gonna stop the Columbia Fire Department people from wanting to have their five fire companies? When they, when they were trying to take, when they took it from five to three, I thought it was gonna be a civil war over there, because I was more over there than I ever was over here at the time. And then when it took it from, I mean, I still here, because I have ten, you know, a few guys out front.
It's, it's happening everywhere, and that's, that's why, because we have so many qualified people, and we have so many people on the roster, you know, we got, I'm always around during the day. Then there's other people that's always around at night, Mike's always around at day. We've always got people to make the call. And they know if they call us, we're gonna show love.
To answer Mel's question, I think to oversimplify and answer to your question, somebody calls in an emergency, they're going one one. They gotta get somebody there. So, it's set up in a rolling system. They're gonna go to the first person assigned to that area. But if that first person doesn't answer, they're gonna go to number two. Number two doesn't answer, they're gonna go to number three. And they're gonna keep on going down the line until they get to Wrightsville. So, even if they're far away, they're gonna keep on tumbling down the line until they get somebody to respond to that call.
Why do we respond it?
But he's saying, we're number one. Why would we be number one for Manchester?
I don't think you are.
No, for Storks Town.
I don't think you are.
Not for Manchester, we're, we're, like secondly, for Manchester.
We're so good that we go out everywhere.
I don't think that's quite it.
But it's free, we're going out there for free, and the people in Wrightsville's paying for this. And honestly.
This one's frustrating.
Right.
Yeah, I understand, but.
Our trucks last for half a week.
The reason the frustration occurs, and, and this is why I'm interested in this, because around us, the fire service is crumbling. And, and that's why this is happening. And so, I'm interested in trying to continue to provide a good service here.
And it did happen.
Like Greg said, if we're going in New York, why are we going to New York? Because they need help. Why do they need help? Because they made their people off.
They got too expensive.
They're taking off the slack.
Because they what?
They got rid of their people because they couldn't pay for them. So, we're going in for free, and we're paying for it.
There, there probably is, there's bias and rationalization to that.
And if we did go in, they'd have free end people back.
One thing to think about is you've got a great group of guys up there that love doing that.
I'm not denying that.
And the good thing about that is, okay, it saves us money. Because I can guarantee you, there are stations out there that had merch, still had issues getting out. They hired paid drivers.
My, my, I don't think anybody gave a consider anything.
I'm just saying, I get it, okay?
I think the problem is that we have too many good people, and thank God for that, but, but, you know.
But what happens when you tell them, good people, you don't want them to do that anymore? They lose interest and go away.
Because they don't have enough fires to entertain them, is that what you're saying?
Mr. Roush just made a really good point here, and he said to me, he said, Neil, he said, maybe you ought to add page three there. He said, page three? I said, what, page three? And he said, that would be what it would be if you had to pay those people to do what they're doing. And, and guys, I understand all of this, this being talked about, right?
And it's beyond what you brought up, and what you, what you pointed out was a very good idea, and I.
The reason I do that is because.
I think it just bubbles up because there's.
This is something that's doable, this is something here that's doable, all this other stuff. There's so much involved that I can't address, or I can't, I can't, I don't have a control.
Well, but, but Neil, I don't think anybody's expecting you to address this, because this, you, what you have here is a good idea, and if you get this to work, go to town. I think, I think more than the concern, my concern is, and I'm sure you probably shared this to some degree, is somebody needs to talk to the fire company about not volunteering for so many boxes. Because it's up to us to what we respond to, right? And there's gotta be some happy medium there. Because what I'm saying is, it's too much right now, we're, we're going too far. We're spending too much money, going too far, and not getting back for compensation. And, and if they're gonna come asking us for more money, or need more money at some, they're gonna need more money at some point. Where's it gonna come from? When the truck does, you know, hit the five hundred thousand miles? And if your fund hasn't been funded.
Yeah, that's my point, this, this is the way to buy.
Right, get a balloon coming.
That, that's, this is the way to purchase that new truck. Wrightsville Borough, I think, and, and this is, this is equitable, this is, for every one thousand dollars of property value, if the three municipalities had the same fire tax rate, everybody became the same tax on the same dollar figure of property.
So, how can we help you advance this?
Well, I, I, I don't think, I don't think really that the fire department understands what I've just laid out. This is, this is, this is stuff that took me a while to understand, even how to finance the borough and run. So, I really think we need to get the fire department to understand that this is, this is how this system works. And, and I really think we need to prevail upon Hellen Township and Hellen Borough as they're able to. Guys, you know what? Page three, that Neil didn't present, is what it costs if the volunteers are not here. If we don't fund the, the equipment, if we don't fund the, this is page three. Guys, you can't go to page three. We need to start talking, and, and some of the things that Mr. McDonald and Mr. White brought up are valid things to talk about. And if there are three municipalities talking about, then the fire departments ought to be listening all the more. You, you mentioned the relationship between the fire department and the borough. That's ouchy. That can't go on like that, that's not good for anybody. You know, we need to put that stuff down, we need to start addressing things.
I think, I think at this point, the borough has been very not hands-on about this situation, because we really wanted to be sticklers about this, we would tell them, look, this is what you're gonna do, or check my comment.
You know, I don't know you have the ability.
Oh, yes, we do.
Well, I don't know you do.
I guarantee you, I'll make the ability happen.
Well, we'll have a discussion with our solicitor here, because really, I mean, I think the borough, and Borough Council has a different relationship than, than the mayor does. And, and at this point, I'm speaking with twelve years of, of looking at this. But the borough has very specific and limited connections to the fire department. And I'll let Mr. Roush chime in here. But the borough has the ability to tell the fire department, you fight fires in Wrightsville Borough. Basically, you appoint them as, you can, you can appoint Columbia to fight fires here, if you want. You set the boxes, Greg signs off on the box assignments.
And that's what I'm saying, we have been very hands-off about that, let them do a thing. And I'm perfectly fine to let them do a thing, but when we come to them with a concern, I expect them to take it seriously. So, I, I mean, I, as has been said, I stood under that siren. I don't need a test, I'll be convincing, I know what it sounds like. And if I hadn't been there, I'd be moving out. I couldn't possibly have been there for two days.
And I think your, your, your logic goes a little bit deeper than that, too, is your concern about property values.
Exactly, I don't want storage burst for four blocks around, the value that you can't resell.
And the reason you're concerned about those property values is because of what I'm pointing to right here. Those property values make up your tax base.
You do it down, because you can't sell it. It's, it's all about the comparables when you sell your properties. What did everything else all run? Nobody wouldn't buy that for ten thousand dollars, because it wasn't worth anything, because I had a god-awful siren, going off three times a day, and nobody wants to live there. It's such an requirement.
It, it's, it's all part of the big picture. But, but the, the Borough Council says, fire department, you play fires. It says, guys, this is how much money we're gonna give you. We can, you know, this is how much money we're gonna give you, whether it's through the general fund, or through the fire tax. Borough Council says, guys, this is your fire chief, you appoint the fire chief for the borough. And, you know, beyond that, there's, there's, you know, you remit certain other funds that come from the state. But that's about the limitations of your, your statutory by law involvement with the fire department.
Yeah, and when we had a little shift in the fire chief at the fire company here last time, I don't remember the Borough Council picking that person, they left the fire department to do that, which I'm all for.
Which one was that?
When Chad became the fire chief.
Chad Lee has been appointed.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's two different, there's two different things that happened there, the fire department.
I'll talk about the last ten years now.
Statutory, okay? According to law. The fire department has the ability to select their own chief. Borough Council can disagree with that.
And if we do, we can actually appoint somebody.
According to the ordinance, we can, we appoint the fire chief.
Uh, I think you really, really careful.
But we.
I'm not saying I want to, what I'm saying is, look, you know, you're saying we can't do this, we can't do that. Well, we don't wanna do that, we wanna work with that, but we're not getting, nobody's picking up the phone, you know?
Well, if they did something stupid like.
They don't put a stupid, but you know, that siren up there is stupid.
But, but a known felon or something in charge, then that would be something that's probably, we, we, we're not gonna do that.
Not for next time. Neil, was there anything else on fire department funding?
Neil, it was a good idea, thank you for putting that forward, I appreciate it, keep doing it. And we see this great plan.
It didn't go anywhere.
Well.
Yeah.
He's being checked for sending some money down.
That's also a good idea.
There's, there's also Lord Windsor, and Chansford Township. And I'm telling you, I drove the fire truck down that way in the middle of the day, and we're the only ones there.
But should they be giving you seriously some money for fuel, some money for, I mean, serious?
You would think so, you would think so.
Yeah, that, that should have to be, or you get off their box, then there may be some.
You, you would think so, I mean, after a while, you would want that.
So, do we have the investor go around with our meetings, they got it by the way, or, or we make some cash?
We're all for that.
I have not the privilege of that. Okay, we're gonna move on, we can, we can talk about this more during the party meeting if we're inside. But National Night Out, August second. Any help, if you're available?
A meeting, a family meeting, or the?
Yes, I probably, I will not be here for the office meeting myself, so we might not have an office meeting. I'm in West Virginia. So, we may not, now that we brought that up, we may not have an office meeting.
I assume not an office planning meeting?
We definitely haven't always planned.
We probably need to make news about that. Well, I don't think we need a, I think we just, instead of, we just postpone it till a planning meeting. Are we allowed to do that, Crystal?
Oh, no, I take that back, August first, I may be back. Okay, National Night Out, Tuesday, August second. It's always been a good time. Lots of stuff going on.
What's Tammy need? Need Eric to dress up like a clown, Sydney, don't think?
I had another type of that time, the rusty water thing.
Next week, that may change.
Okay.
Okay, anything under community and that can't be developed?
I don't think we have anything developed.
Parks and Rec? I know you're meeting with the people, right?
Parks and Rec, so, Crystal, I met with Anne Yost, and we started looking at playground equipment and laying out the actual playground equipment. She is supposed to get back to us based on the selection Crystal and Tammy and myself had involvement in. I thought, thought that it's important to involve Crystal in that, because she works at the school, and she's around, gets a lot more, and would know better than I would, what type of equipment would benefit the community. And that was.
Is this something like we can get in on and help with, and?
As far as what?
I don't know, anything?
Probably.
Because that's kind of why I started coming, because like, well, she and I were talking, I mean.
She wants to help out with this.
Are you Michael Merk, okay?
Paul.
Paul, yeah, so, okay, so, because I saw one of your, like, I don't know, status or comment, and, I mean, I want to be more like, do community events and whatnot, and all you read is people saying.
All the data.
Back in the day, how it used to be, and blah, 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 and, I mean, I.
And in some point in time, talking to the popcorn lady over here, Gina.
Yeah.
She also wants to do things in the park, it's a matter of coordinating and coming up with an idea. By the end of the year, we would like to do something community-related in the park. What it's gonna be, I'm not sure.
So, where's our, the charter?
Uh, the River Trump Park, this will be referenced, is right across the street. The ball fields, all the playground.
That's where the Big Mac.
Okay.
Yep.
Great for a restaurant, that's really sad.
That's nice, right there.
That was the conceptual plan, everything is based on funding.
So, that's like the pavilion, and then, okay.
Yes, and what we're looking at going at this point is replacing the swing sets, the merry-go-round is probably gonna go away, possibly be replaced with a similar piece of equipment, which is still based on funding, not sure. It may just go away, okay? But the swing sets, like the climber thing, the spinner thing, no, no, the spinner, would have been in place of the merry-go-round.
Yeah.
It's a funny word.
His love merry-go-round, I don't know, it's something different.
It's a safety. But, so.
Safety is just around them now.
We're moving forward with picking the playground equipment and.
You guys don't get those kids anymore, do you? Because we go to Emmett Park, they're on the merry-go-round, the whole kind of.
I think those ones are a little safer.
Okay, so this one, I, I've never been down there.
You don't want kids on that one.
No, no, okay, we've never, we drive cars, but that's.
Square wrought iron.
Okay, so it's not.
Sharp edges some places, possibly.
No, that truck, no.
Okay, so.
The, the ones that you're seeing out there are probably from the early eighties, round holes and everything, a little more. Yeah, and this was from the late sixties, early seventies.
All right, so, anything else on, you met with them?
We met with them, we have some, uh, equipment picked out. She's gonna put things to the drawing board according to the space and cost. And then, once she has done that, uh, we're gonna meet again and have final kind of review and select the equipment, agree to that.
Well, do we need to, afford, are we making decisions? We can put it out to public comment, so that people can.
Once it's. That's what it's kind of, we had an area set, it has to fit this space, and it's gotta be under this mountain line. So, it's not gonna be a large selection, unfortunately, we didn't, we had what, roughly sixty-four thousand, Crystal? To spend between both areas?
Thirty-six and twenty.
Twenty-six.
Out of our, out of our four hundred thousand dollars.
Yes. So, we did have.
This is the part where I get upset.
Amount of money to put at.
Thirty thousand dollars to design it, that we're not designing it. And only a hundred thousand dollars was going towards it, now it's less?
It's actually less.
Whose idea was that?
It's not ours, it's, I mean, we could have denied grants altogether, not got any of it. That's how you have to look at it.
It's free money, but everybody wants their finger in the pot.
Free money, it's tax money that I paid, and they paid, it's just some of it's coming back to us. And we're not gonna get any more for years to come, so we better use it well.
And that's how I looked at it, when we walked into that and I made the motion to accept it, was it's free money, basically. We don't take, we don't give. But, uh, and as, as the choice has come back, if you guys would like to review it in a meeting, I don't have any issue with that. I don't.
I'd like to review it in a meeting. I'd like to have it.
I'd like to review it in a meeting, I'd like to have a look at it.
We'll have to approve, and I'd like to take a look at it. We'll, we'll have to approve the final... The final plan, we'll have to approve. All right, um...
Still wondering that quick, if I may? In some of the community events that Eric and I visited, we spoke with River Town's organization. They're looking to do some projects, and there's been things on my old reports that have been in there for a while. The fence around Union Cemetery, the fences for commons, um... The reason I bring this up is if they're willing to pay for and install a fence, does the borough have an issue with me going to them and asking them to do so?
Where are we fencing at?
Just replacing the fences that are there, that are damaged.
Oh, yeah, free fence is free fence.
Not saying they're gonna do it, but they said they wanted to do a project in Wrightsville, so it's not a worry.
Project, they actually said that, they actually said, well, we're not gonna do a project in Wrightsville, how about follow over?
I think it's a good, you know, like, small project, it gets them in town, they're happy, we're happy.
Okay, I have under, anything on the first map? Reference, additional business, reference highlighted information, but I'm not, not concerning the plan meeting, okay, we got that. And, um, this is not, yep, that's the eighteenth, not the twentieth. Is there any additional business that we have not touched on that we need to touch on? If not, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to recess, we're gonna be voting. If we're voting on a resolution, we're voting on...
Free closure.
And, and also the safety service.
Okay.
So I make a motion to recess, the regular council meeting to Monday, July eighteen.
Any questions? I'll lose the favor of adjournment, or recessment? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Recess.